Okay, I would invite you all to rise as you can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item tonight is our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of January 16th and approval of pay ordinance 871. Any discussion of the consent agenda?
Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Our next item is call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time
to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? Please step up and state your name and address.
Just a picture. I'm not going to send the rest. I've been in discussion with Mike and I really didn't put anything together, but I'm just a little concerned about the timeline on this process. I had RG Fiber, your contractor, did some damage to my sewer lines at the apartments back in October. I had a clogged line in one of the buildings and called Tim Fisher, plumber, and he got it cleared out, said, "There's a problem. There's something wrong." And we got him taken care of and they got cleaned out. There's nothing worse than a backed-up stool for six people in an apartment. So anyway, got it taken care of. But Mike said there's going to be continued issues if we don't figure out why it's doing that. There weren't any trees in the way. And then January, first part of January, had same issue. Called Tim again and I went down there with my little plunger and didn't do much. But blew the lines out again and they were, it was getting dark, but they saw water blowing out of the ground. Had the lines marked and there's a, that's a fiber line running through the sewer line with those little brown things around it. If you want to ask what those are, I'll tell you. But the fiber line ran right through the middle of my sewer line. It is in the right of way. I did meet with RG Fiber and they looked at it and said, "Yeah, that's the problem." I mean, the bills are all paid, but, and I'm working with his insurance company. Their insurance company called me today and said they would look into it, so they would let me know in three to four weeks. I'm just out a bunch of money and I shouldn't even have to deal with this stuff. I don't lose a lot of sleep, but I have left a little hostile sleep thing. Okay, how long do I have to deal with this stuff? At least another month. So anyway, you got the bills. Mike is taking care of me on this. He's following up and we're pushing these things, so I don't expect any response, but I just want to let you know that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone give an update?
I do, yeah. Just to follow up, you know, I learned some things through the process that I didn't know. Basically, underground utilities are regulated by the KCC. It's the DigSafe kind of regulatory branch. As far as whose responsibility is and where the jurisdiction lies, a couple of things to note. We have a design bill contract with RG to install those conduits along 95th Street. It has a bond, it has insurance, it has all those. But along Lexington Avenue, the bonds don't apply. The bonds are just for the stuff along 95th Street. But they do have a right-of-way permit to do the work along Lexington Avenue, and we have an insurance policy associated with that right-of-way permit. It does apply. So that's why they're now going through the insurance policy. Oddly enough, the property owner isn't responsible to locate or mark that service line, as you know, you would expect. City isn't responsible to locate the service line. So as far as the jurisdictional regulatory agency goes, if the contractor can't be held responsible for missing it or for hitting it from a regulatory standpoint. So they don't feel like they have jurisdiction to imply any punitive damages on the contractor for illegal or unsafe or inappropriate construction methods. So from their standpoint, it's a civil matter. From my standpoint, from a fairness standpoint, I think Mr. Johnson's the last on the list that should have to bear the cost of these repairs. So I've told him that. We've told RG that. We've offered to RG that we could reimburse Mr. Johnson and just take that out of the last payment. And I think RG's desire is to allow the insurance company to do their due diligence and see what the coverage that they would, see what they'll cover on it and see if there is a gap after that and then we address that at that time. So that's where we are. It's not fast enough for me. I know it's not fast enough for Randy. But I do feel like we do need to allow that process to continue through. So that's where we are.
Okay.
It's kind of an odd, so the thing for us to follow up with, and really, kind of it was unfortunately sort of a good exercise to go through, is what about all these sewer lateral lines that aren't marked or won't be marked as the rest of the build gets done through town? And I think we might need to address our right-of-way ordinance to more specifically address this particular case. Because it does appear like it's some loophole or doughnut hole that's not really covered exactly in the regulatory framework. So that's what we'll be looking to do. Looking at our right-of-way regulations, maybe beef those up a little bit with some language.
Okay.
Hey, folks.
Thank you.
Sorry for your inconvenience. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Please step up. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Laura Jimenez and I work for WNG Construction as the manager, manager office and what?
Excuse me. Would you spell your last name for me, Laura?
J.I.M.E.N.E.Z.
And the company you work for?
WNG Construction LLC. WNG.
And they are located?
In 1417 Jackson Avenue in Kansas City, Missouri. 64127.
Thank you.
And I'm addressing an issue with RG Fiber too. We signed contract back in 2019 around September, at the end of September. We issued our first invoice around October and we've been issuing, if I'm good, like six invoices already, and we have to skip pay one invoices. One invoice of all those six invoices. We have emails and everything. They're saying they're working on getting paid to us, but they haven't. My boss, William Sanchez, he's already tired of being waiting because we've been patient since last year. So the company is already working with a lawyer regarding this issue. And yeah, we're still waiting and they still don't give any response or anything.
Okay. Thank you. Let's just take your information.
Payment bond. Yeah, I don't know if it was your attorney, but an attorney contacted me last week, just asked for the bonds on the project and I provided those right away. So that's where it is.
Anyone else?
All right. Makes it much easier. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
JC Cornelsen with Vermeer Great Plains out of Alatha. We're an equipment supplier that have dealt with RG, lack of payment. Basically, I kind of showed up here tonight to see if you guys, is there a payment schedule for RG on the project?
Yeah, well, there's not a schedule, but there's, they've had one payment and then there's a second payment that is only due after some deadline, contractual deadlines that have not been met yet.
Gotcha.
I don't know when that will be.
So at this point, I've spoke with you before, Mike.
Yeah.
I'm putting a lien, I'm leending the job with the bonding company. Just so everybody knows, he's not paying his bills. So obviously, I won't get any answers tonight, but that's RG that's not paying his bills.
Yeah, and I gave you the bond information too.
Correct.
This was several months ago, right?
Several weeks ago, so.
What does he owe you? How much?
About $46,000.
Okay.
So, yep. Thank you.
Anyone else on call to public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item three is old business. We do not have any tonight, so we'll go to item four, new business. Item A, consider resolution providing notice and scheduling a public hearing on IRB tax incentive request from K-10 Place Two for Phase Two apartment project.
Yes, council, this really is just a formality. We're putting notice and public hearing. We told the applicant we wouldn't be substantively discussing this, but I did attach the application of cost-benefit analysis just so you can have those to look over prior to the public hearing. But we'll be sending the cost-benefit analysis to the school and county along with the notice, and then we have the public hearing set for March 5th.
Okay, any questions for Patrick on this item? Sets the date and time for a public hearing?
I would just add Travis Six is out of town. He didn't want to be here this evening, but Jason Cohors, his partner, one of the partners, is with us here tonight. So Travis is out of town.
Questions, discussion, comments? Go ahead, Lori.
No, I really don't have any question.
Oh, okay. A motion?
I've read through it, so unless anybody else has something to say, I can make a motion. We approve the resolution as written.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
What number is that?
All right, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Our next item is to discuss a change order for the 83rd Street sidewalk project.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back. I've had about a month and a half hiatus from appearing before you. So it's been, actually, the last meeting in December I was here, so what do you know? Anyway, you know, we're working on trying to get the 83rd Street sidewalk project wrapped up. One of the issues that's kind of outstanding is there's an area of that, it's a retaining wall or some sort of solution, either moving the wall or moving the pole for that location. It's kind of got some exposed earth and there's a pole sticking out of the ground, a utility power pole. And what we did was, we actually went out for bid and got a couple contractors. One was USA Concrete. They're the actually prime on the job. They got us a bid for building a retaining wall to help support that pole and some of the, and the dirt that's back there as well. And another company called Real Drainage Solutions. I met with both contractors on site and walked, of course, USA Concrete is, has been out there quite a bit, so they're pretty familiar with the location. But I did also walk the site with Real Drainage Solutions. And the folks from Real Drainage Solutions had a much lower price, so I would recommend that we proceed with that for an amount of $8,245. One thing I wanted to point out and kind of how we got to this point in time is when we bid this part of the project, we knew there might be an issue right through there. We had actually talked with the engineer about maybe doing a little sort of a concrete turn-up wall. Didn't feel like that was going to work very well. We also considered even narrowing the sidewalks. We didn't have to cut into the hillside as much down to five feet. Didn't feel like that was a really good option either because it's an eight-foot-wide multi-use path. And I guess the one thing, when we bid the job, we figured, or we were going to work with Westar at the time on potentially moving the pole. However, they, once we got to that point, they gave us some blowback on, you know, they didn't want to move the pole. They don't know they're going to get to the move. They don't know when they're going to be able to move the pole. And then also, now that, now we've got this situation that they're worried that the pole might fall over. So they didn't really give us much consideration on those regards. So at this point, our solution now is to build a retaining wall out of a split-faced block. I did show a picture of it, the type of material and the cap that would be used. The wall is about almost 100 feet long and at its peak, right near the base of the power pole, it'd be about four feet, but then it would just taper down triangular sort of towards each end. So unfortunately, that's how we ended up at this particular point in time, but I would like to get moving forward on a solution if you're all agreeable. I will stand for any questions you may have.
Kevin?
Well, I guess I was, you said, "How did we get here?" And I'm wondering, how did that not get caught in a design situation? So in part, I think, well, is this sort of a betterment thing where we would have had this cost had it been fully thought through at the time? But, you know, I guess what I didn't get was that you were hoping or thinking that maybe Westar could move the pole. I guess what I'm wondering is, can you just build the retaining wall in the area around the pole and grade the rest of it out instead of?
Yeah, I did actually talk with-
Building a wall for 100 feet?
Yeah, I did talk with Justin Milburn about that a little bit this morning, and he thinks we can probably shorten it up some as well, and so we can work with the contractor on that. I just went out with a walker wheel and kind of, and just sort of paced and wheeled out where I thought was a reasonable area. Because there actually is, I mean, even on the shorter areas, it is a fairly quick little drop down to the-
It looks like originally, we had it graded out back into-
Right.
So we would have, they would have had to either lowered the pole in place or set a new pole beside it and moved the equipment over. And then probably, we would, should have had an easement, I guess, off of law heads then on the right side of the picture then, right?
I think right here, this is our property.
Right.
But this would be, right there is law heads.
Yeah, it's minor encroachment. Yeah, I get, that was my thought as well, was similar to Kevin's, like, that's kind of, on our property, we can still grade back, so let's shorten the heck out of that. We don't need to follow the wall, just follow the dang pole back and then head straight north. Once you get past the pole, let the slope grade back into the wall and then we'll do a little-
Just pass these guy anchors.
Yeah, oh, I see there are some guy. I got you. There we go.
You have to get just past there, so you could turn it up kind of where this is.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to build a wall on the city property side for sure, past where you need it. But then if you got to get an easement to grade it out on the other side, then I see the constraint. But I guess I'll ask the question, had it been designed at the time, would this have been a cost we would have incurred? And therefore, and in that, are we minimizing the impact of the requirement for the wall?
Well, yes, we would have had some impact. If it were included in the bid package, as, I mean, obviously, it would have been a cost that we would have incurred. We were, I guess, erroneously hoping for that, or considering that Westar would be able to move that power pole. And, but they really did not show any kind of enthusiasm in any way, shape, or form.
And then-
Because they were also working on a lot of power poles in the city at that time as well. They actually did some work over by City Hall.
We could force the issue, but it's timed at this point. You know, I mean, it's there in our right-of-way. They, it is in conflict with our project. So they need to move the pole if we so desire, but in, I guess, in the interest of time or-
Yeah, they have no incentive to move the pole.
No, exactly. So we're at 180 days or whatever, whenever they decide. Whatever, I guess, whatever the maximum time is allowed by their franchise agreement to clear a conflict with the city project.
It's half a year.
That's why I said it's 180 days. So that's, that's when the pole would get moved for, so, yeah. Yeah.
And it's, it's not just a service drop either.
No, it's a complicated, which is why they're not real excited about trying to re-engineer that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else have any discussion or questions?
What's the safety item on that? You guys were mentioning the safety.
Well, it's exposed. The pole has, so if high winds or something right now, actually, it's, the safety issue is right now while that pole's sitting kind of up in the air, exposed. Something needs to happen with it sooner rather than later because it needs to be appropriately backfilled so it's not in danger of getting blown over. The front face of that pole is, you know, doesn't have the amount of dirt in front of it that it should have to hold it in place.
And consequently, are those guys off to the east? Are they, do they not have sufficient cover around them? I mean, the ones to the west are obvious, but are those guys to the east? Are they, is the cover on those anchors impaired or not?
I've, I don't, I don't, didn't have a look at that specifically.
Well, I've looked at, I mean, they're basically parallel, I guess, to the street and to the power pole on-
Right, but you've cut back towards-
No, the ones on the west. The ones on the east are, 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 and fine. They're fine.
Okay, but the cut is back towards the guy anchor, right?
Yes.
You're in cut, they're not fill.
Yeah, it's cut here, but it's not, it's only-
It's a lot less.
Foot or so.
Yeah.
It's two or three.
It's like, yeah, three foot right square even with the pole.
Yeah.
Or so, I didn't get out my tape measure and check it. I don't know what it is. That's what my eyeball said.
Knee-high.
I'll make a motion. We accept the bid with Real Drainage Solution in an amount not to exceed $8,245.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hana Michael? Yes.
Murdoch? Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, before we get off this project, could I have a discussion on?
Oh, sure. Yeah, move on to the other.
Yeah, so, you know, we've heard more than one concern about the aesthetics of the jersey barriers that were put in down there. They look temporary. They're actually permanent. That's, that's what was designed. That's what was put in. I will say, there is, in the plans and in the bids, there's a vinyl-coated chain-link fence to go on top of the jersey barrier, much like the one that's under the railroad. So that'll dress it up a bit. There's also a fence going on this bridge rail as well. So what we've, we have pricing for, I think some of the concerns are this taper right here on the, on the east end. As you're headed west, looking at the project, this taper looks pretty abrupt. And so we've got pricing to do two things. The first thing would be to add an end section to these jersey barriers, one that tapers down like we have under the railroad tracks, and then to add about another 10 foot of length in that, or is it 12 feet?
Well, the end sections are actually, they're two 20, two 10-foot sections, so-
Okay, so we'd add-
We're going to remove one 12-foot jersey barrier and add 20 feet on to the end.
So add some length and then take this taper and-
Flatten it out.
Flatten it out.
Yes.
There's a AT&amp;T box right here, so we moved the end of the jersey barrier to the street side of that AT&amp;T box, so it'd wind up about here. So I think the taper aesthetically will be, will look better. The end section will look better. We'll also put the end section on the west end as well. So the question now, and I think we can do that within, kind of within the budget that we have, within my authority, so we plan to move forward with that. The other question arose that do we want to see what it would cost just to completely replace that jersey barrier that's there now? Take them out and put something in that looks like, because the only difference now would be the joints. Because the joints right now, the concrete's six inches apart and they've got the metal brackets with kind of the pins going through them. It looks utilitarian and industrial, and it just doesn't look the best.
Under the railroad bridge, we have the other style that has the hidden joint. Basically, it looks like it's-
A continuous barrier rather than the pin.
Yeah, it looks a lot, and so I asked Mike, I said, "What would it take to replace? Let's just see what it costs to put a similar barrier here that had the same look."
Yeah, so-
Do you have a picture of that?
I, we can go and look at this one here on the street view. I'm hoping.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah, there's no doubt it looks very temporary. And I don't know that putting a fence on, on top of it's going to make it look any less temporary.
That was my comment.
So this is the one that's down there now. So you can see that there's, there're joints, but there's no gaps between those joints. And then this end section, you know, I think we'll, you know, we're planning on an end section that looks like this. But the difference is, and I've got those plans.
What's the, do you have an estimate on cost of changing it out to the other style?
That's what, we're going to get that. We're going to get some pricing on that. And I don't, I don't know if these details will make any sense to anybody if it'll, it's kind of really hard to see graphic. Oh, there it is. This is what's put in there now. It's got this pin connection type thing. So this is all exposed. This is steel with that pin. If you've driven by, if you've looked, you, you know, and that's kind of what, I don't, I don't know, you know, what, we'll get pricing and I'm sure that'll tell us a lot. It will be tens of thousands.
The existing barrier makes it look like a perpetual construction zone.
Yeah, it looks temporary.
Well, I think if the, you know, one question I had about is whether, and this is kind of real off-subject, but whether we're going to be completing, redoing the surface on Lexington. Because it seems to me that once complete striping and stuff is done on it, that at some point, that's kind of more of my concern than look of it, you know? And, and, you know, the striping just makes it hard. It just seems like it's sticking out there and it's hard to, I mean, it shouldn't be, but it is without having lanes and stuff. And so, you know.
We do, so in our street improvements this year, I think we're going to be ready at the next council meeting, maybe to have some recommendations. Include U-Bass for this, this section. Now, over the bridge, I don't know if we're going to be U-Bassing on the bridge or not.
No, no.
Well, I noticed tonight, it looks like somebody's put a new center line down.
They did that.
Well, they did. They did it on Sunday and I'm not happy about that. But that's a temporary, you know, we've been on them to get some temporary striping down. That wasn't, you know, the intent was to grind those stripes and then come back the next week and put the permanent ones down, but weather got them and excuses got them.
Them being the construction company or?
Yeah, yeah. The dilemma right now is the fence company's coming in next week. And so, you know, I think we want to hold off at least till we get this pricing on the replacing of the jersey barriers, on putting a fence on top of that thing. You know, they can do, they can do the one over on the bridge rail, but for this, I think we'll hold off.
Or if you don't agree and we just go forward with what we got.
Yeah, I guess that's what.
I would like to see the pricing to make it look like it's not a ongoing construction zone.
Yeah.
It's not like we couldn't use these somewhere else. That's why they-
Or do they take them back? I mean, they're-
We could probably pay a restock or-
Pay a restock on them and take them back.
They will take them back, but I mean, we don't have really the ability to move these things.
Yeah, there wouldn't be much use for us.
I guess some of the things I've learned in this discussion is there's, I guess the industry standard is it's a blunt end or a pinned end. And we had pinned ends in our, in our design. Apparently, they're just a little bit easier to set, so that's why we have these rather than the blunt ends. But I guess as far as the costs, I've talked to two companies that, well, one, the original one, that St. Joe Concrete that put these in, and they're working on a price. And also this other company, 48 Barriers, is also going to get us a price. But we're going to have costs for removal and restocking. Now, we will get somewhat of a credit on the old barriers, but, you know, it's going to be probably over $25,000 to $30,000 to, because you're doubling your labor costs because you've got to remove the old ones and haul them out, bring the new ones in, place them. So anyway, that's kind of where things look like they might be going, but I have not gotten anything official yet from them. I guess the other point about Mike-
I think it's, it's interesting. Is that a clip out of the plan sheet for that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, because even the detail is called a temporary safety barrier, you know?
Yep. That's, I think it's KDOT.
Yeah, it's a KDOT standard, but I mean, it even leads you to believe that, yeah, it has that temporary look to it. It is a temporary barrier.
Sure does.
I would just like to make one comment. When they set these, they did, they were working on, I think- I would just like to make one comment, when they set these, they did, uh, they were working on, I think it was a Saturday or late Friday, but it was Saturday, I believe, but they didn't, they had very poor traffic folks out there, they only had two folks working, one that was running the crane, and one that was setting, and they had no flaggers, no nothing, so. If they, if we do choose to make the improvement, sure, comes back, needs to make sure that they have the problem.
Well, there'll be no more work on the weekend, um, after the incident with Mr. Neeland, that was on a weekend, wasn't it? This thing, yeah, I'm done with weekend work for a while, I think.
All right.
Okay, thank you for that, yeah, thanks for that discussion.
Thank you.
All right. So let's talk about our strategic plan, item C, strategic plan update.
Yes, um, we talked about this at the last meeting and decided that we needed to, um, go back and revisit the results of the retreat that we did last summer and incorporate those into what we're, um, working on with the current update. So I did that, um, exhibit A was really the document that came out of our retreat, uh, report of key findings that, uh, was produced in July of two thousand nineteen. And what I've done in your packets, um, I've highlighted sections of those and given just little comments out to the side that's where you can see where those, uh, individual action items were incorporated into the strategic plan, so. You know, for instance, this first one, these comment bubbles look like I'm just talking about the one line, but really it's all these lines above, affordable housing, so I've incorporated that into a new initiative in, uh, section EX one point five. So, you can kind of see as you go through the list where, um, where I've incorporated those different sections into the current version, which again is, is just a redline version from our changes, uh, that we had last year. There's actually quite a bit that, um, I was able to update or include since the last time you saw this at the last council meeting. So, all the, again, all the changes are in, are in red, uh, so that we could kind of keep that historical context. Each year we'll be able to see what we changed from the previous year, it'll serve kind of as a, uh, as a library, uh, going forward. So I, you know, I wasn't gonna dive in to the specifics of each one of those or the wordsmithing of those, just allow you to absorb that and, um, I'll stand for any questions you might have about those additions since last time.
Okay. Any, uh, comments from council for Mike? Okay. So, hearing none, then I guess you'll bring the formal document at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think, yeah, uh, last time we adopted by resolution, so we'll keep up that practice.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Item D, discuss CIP update.
Capital improvements, yeah. Similar sort of thing, we, we looked at this at the last meeting, um, and had some discussion, a lot of which was centered around, uh, kind of an emphasis on downtown and, uh, pulling out the, the downtown plan that was done, you know, the original one back in two thousand six, and the idea was to incorporate that in a phased approach, chip away at that, I think was kind of the wording that we've used. So, um, as the staff report describes, what I've done is I've taken that spreadsheet that we work, the colorful spreadsheet that sometimes is confusing, and I know it's a lot of numbers and a lot of colors, but I've, I've bulleted, um, on the first page of the staff report the changes I've made since you saw it last time. The first thing I did was, um, so in the spreadsheet, for each, each year we update it, uh, we'll have the current plan from the previous year in the top section, and then a CIP update section at the bottom, so that, it kind of like the strategic plan, we can see what we're doing from one year to the next. So these are the updates this year, the last time you saw this, it had last year's updates in it. So I've taken all those revenues and projects and moved them into the body of the, uh, of the main, the spreadsheet body up top. And so what you see down below is just the updates we're looking at for this year, currently at this time. So, in the, in the new updates, as far as new projects goes, uh, really have two of them, uh, kind of a phased approach to the downtown streetscape that occurs in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and then field lighting for B Field. This was a, a new request that Jay, uh, submitted, and I've got it shown in there in, uh, next year, twenty twenty-one. There's no new revenue sources, uh, so, um, additional bonds in the out years aren't contemplated, but you can see, as every year, the, we have these reoccurring revenue streams, you know, listed items one through twelve, or I guess really one through nine that happen each year. And so if you just look at those revenue streams with those projects, we can see that we can fund everything on this spreadsheet right now, as it stands, but it's not that simple. I did want to let you know, uh, project twelve Miller Park Drainage, we've reduced the scope of that, we priced accordingly. Was a two hundred thousand dollar project for kind of a comprehensive, uh, system down there. Now it's an eighty thousand dollar project, we're gonna solve, uh, targeted areas, there's the rec, the path down there that floods in one or two areas, and then the Lake Miller Park that occurs where we used to play soccer on the east end, eighty thousand dollars to kind of fix those targeted things. Item three here on the staff report talks about the downtown streetscape project. I've put that whole two hundred, two thousand six document from RDG, I've put that in your staff report, I think it's good to look at that. I hadn't seen it in a while, so, uh, it's good to look at that. And for the cost estimates, I've just indexed those, uh, there's a couple of websites you can go to, uh, that'll show you tables for indexing on construction costs regionally from two thousand six to two thousand twenty-four. Works out to be, I think it was about thirty-five percent, thirty-six percent increase between that time, and I, I assume that accounts for the recession and, um, inflationary factors. So, that's what I did on that, and then I talked about the new project on Miller Park. So exhibit C, I've got project details sheets there for the new projects that are under consideration, and then exhibit D has the master list. On the top of the second page, I've got this table of, really, there's, most of them are smaller projects, but these are ones that have kind of risen, at least risen in priority or, um, come up in our conversation, either with the staff or at the council level. The first two are lighting projects, Lexington Avenue, lighting along Lexington, uh, Lexington Avenue has been on, I think Bob suggested it in two thousand two or so, that it gets dark in some areas along Lexington, so there's a project, uh, for that. Now, these aren't, these aren't in the spreadsheet now, so these, these are ones that are under consideration, but really haven't, don't, aren't, don't show up on our programming yet. Lexington Avenue Lighting, similar thing along Commerce Drive, both sections, it's just, and I guess what drove it home to me is, is driving the new section of Ninety-first Street with its boulevard type style lighting, if you haven't done that, do it. It's, looks great, it looks great driving by on K-ten, you wonder what's going on over there, well, nothing yet, I guess, but, um, really looks good. But Commerce Drive is really dark at night, uh, and so a boulevard style type lighting, um, I think is warranted along there. Waverly Water Tower, uh, a million dollars would replace that with a, uh, a new, a new tower, but at a lower elevation. Right now, it's too high for us to even use, uh, the pressure zone out there, um, and there's a history behind that, but, um, the zone, you know, the, the, the pressure is, is fine, we're using the stand pipe, but it would be good to have additional elevated storage up there. Eighty-third and Corliss intersection improvements, um, this is one I think Kevin, you, you brought up a couple of months ago about that, that box culvert under Corliss just south of eighty-third, it's pretty short and it creates a drop off, and to kind of, uh, fix that, you kind of have to do the whole intersection or at least half of it. So that's what that project is, uh, demo, the old sewer plant, this is the one down behind Dick Lawhead's house, it's just kind of sitting down there doing nothing for ten years now, eleven years now, so we probably ought to get that on the, on the list. And then the last one is a truck lift in the street department shop, column lift. So those are, I think, new, the, those haven't been on the list before, you haven't seen them before, so those are new. Also wanted to talk a little bit about, um, the sewer extension projects. We have two of them actually on the CIP, uh, program to be funded, um, one of them that would provide sewers to Ninety-fifth and Lexington that we've had on our list for quite a while. The other one would be to provide sewers to, uh, an area along, uh, Edgerton Road and a Hundred and Third Street that's been the subject of economic development potential for ten years or so. We're showing those now, that they remain in there, and actually, we have money this year budgeted, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars actually for twenty twenty, uh, to, the thought was to start designing that and acquiring, um, easements for the sewer extension to Ninety-fifth and Lexington. We're working right now through an incentives policy update that's really taken a broader, or I guess a, 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 a fresh look at the sewer master plan, um, and timing of that and phasing of that, and, um, it, it, the suggestion has been that we use some of that, uh, money budgeted for just the sewer design and put that into kind of an overall, a, a broader brush, uh, area plan for the southwest areas or some of those targeted incentive zones. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow that, I, I'd like to, um, allow that discussion to occur for another couple of months. The committee we have looking at the incentives policy wants to get together with the Economic Development, uh, Council and work through some items with them before we bring it back to the, to the full council to start discussing that. So we're looking at, at, at sewer extensions that would incentivize development and, and road projects and water, and that ties into the water service territory, there's just a lot of moving parts right now. So, I think what I'd want to do is hold off on hiring a consultant to just go design a sewer project uh, until we can vet some of those things out. So, you know, at least, you know, the first, at least the first quarter, you know, maybe into the, to the second quarter of this year, and not, not proceed with that project, even though that one and, and the other, and the other sewer project to get sewers out to Edgerton Road are programmed in, uh, you know, for, between now and twenty twenty-two. It's quite a, it's quite a chunk, it's, it's about one point six million, uh, between those two projects and sewer extensions, so. That's a big part of the CIP, and, you know, I think there's probably, you know, there might be room in here for other stuff, um, you know, but for now, as a placeholder, uh, we'll leave them. You know, maybe we, maybe we turn, instead of these project descriptions being very specific, we kind of turn that into some less specific placeholder, uh, for some sort of, uh, infrastructure supporting economic development, something like that. Just something so that we can kind of not commit exactly to these projects right now and allow us some time to work this out throughout the course of this year. Kevin and Lori, Kevin and Lori are the, the committee, uh, looking at the incentives policy. If you want to jump in on that, um, that's, I think that's my feeling, is how, how this kind of thing would, would work, at least early on at this time.
I think you summed it up pretty well, I think what we've got at least is money in the budget that we know we can manage, we can handle, we could spend if needed, if an opportunity arises. Part of the, part of what we want to be is nimble enough to respond to which opportunity it is that arises and which one best fits the need of the city, but I think untangling the idea of incentives is really, uh, pointing to, looking at the best places to invest in infrastructure to create the best return for the city. So it's a ROI type situation, not just a logic, you know, not just a move your way upstream situation, but a, but figure out where in the, where in the watersheds we can get the most ROI, based on what the market seems to be, uh, desiring or driving towards with economic opportunities. As we saw with the Sims Project wanting to be, you know, out west, whereas we've got something programmed that's farther east, so. So let's be nimble enough to respond to the, to the opportunities that arise.
Yeah, so, so my intent, you know, maybe, um, when we, when we finalize this year's update is to maybe take these project descriptions out, call it something else, but leave kind of the money.
Infrastructure to support economic development, you know.
Exactly.
Future economic development.
Flexible, yeah.
We don't, we don't know exactly what, what or where that is yet, but we know that it, it may, it's likely that it might happen, hopefully would, so.
And this effort, you know, is reflected in the, in the strategic plan, and it was reflected in our, in our, uh, workshop, in our, in our retreat results, so. It's all, it all falls in line pretty well. The only other thing I wanted to just kind of outline for you is our, um, effort, the CIP efforts for this year. The, the bond, uh, the, the program actually has us issuing some debt, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, so we'll get our bond counsel and, uh, financial advisors engaged in that process. Most of that is to fund the roundabout projects, or project, sorry, there's one.
Don't start that rumor.
Don't start that. In, in, in anticipation of that, we do need to hire the consultant to design the roundabout, so I'll be, uh, putting together an RFQ for that, we'll do a qualification space selection process for that. We've got two hundred and seventy thousand dollars programmed for the new public works facility, Ron's wanting some, um, lean-to structures, some, some weather, um, to keep weather off of, uh, the equipment, that's most of it, there's some other improvements out there on site to do. There is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars program for safety improvements and asbestos removal at City Hall. Brad and Jay have been engaging, uh, architects on that, uh, they spent most of the morning yesterday out in the hall discussing where walls might go and dividing and, and locks and alarms, things like that. And then there is actually a placeholder, uh, five hundred thousand dollars for Parks and Recreation. If the bond referendum passes in March, um, we think we're gonna be able to implement some projects this year. So I've, I've slid that up in the timeframe, so. That's it, from, for that, for that standpoint. I think, you know, if there's nothing earth shattering, uh, we'll be in a position maybe to finalize this year's, uh, update at the next meeting. If not, it's, it's not a big deal if it slides till March.
Okay. Ready to move on, four E, discuss shade structure for Riverfest Park.
Yes, council, um, you know, we had, we had a successful, uh, summer concert series events down at Riverfest last year, and the idea arose, I think, last fall about getting some sort of a structure over the, um, over the band, over the stage area down there. So what I did is, uh, I asked for Doug Pickert to help me out, cause he's, you know, this is kind of what he does for a living, uh, and he provided several options that could be considered, anything ranging from, you know, a four thousand dollar inflatable things, I'd never seen these before in my life, those look pretty cool, but poor Jay, I wouldn't wish this on him, putting that thing up and down and storing it, and, so that looked pretty, yeah, uh, interesting, but novel. The other one would be a, a fabric on a steel frame, this would be a thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar, much like the shade structures we have back here at the pool. And then the, um, there's versions of those that would be, uh, more complicated and more substantial, like maybe some of these pictures. This would be a fifty or sixty thousand dollar, and then the Cadillac version would be to build a permanent structure over the stage. A wood structure like here on the bottom right would, you know, be around a hundred thousand. This one on the up left is actually at Eighty-seventh and Lackman, uh, in Lenexa, and Doug said, this was a project that Doug did, he said that thing's about five hundred thousand, but it's got some very unique architecture, some, some reason, some things that made it, uh, that made it expensive. So, um, you know, what, what I, what I thought was probably the most logical option was this thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, fabric on frame option, so I asked him to look at that more specifically. Provided, uh, the details that he, that he showed in that. We also were considering some sort of a structure where you could mount some lights or maybe some sound, um, speakers on. He's a little apprehensive about that, because he said shade structures are, uh, kind of manufactured to be what they are, and soon as you go attaching stuff, then they start worrying about the engineering, and so he's thinking if we want to do that, have that be a standalone structure aside, and maybe it's a temporary one that we put up and down, or maybe we don't even need it, but kind of he, he shied away from incorporating that into the structure of the shade structure. So the last page of exhibit B there is, what he's recommending is a forty by forty, uh, structure that would cover, the stage is forty foot diameter, so the, the support post would be outside the stage. This, I mean, for reference, this is the stage down there, and this is the side, the inner, that inner sidewalk loop is right there. So this is kind of the amphitheater bowl, how that was set in there. We do have funding, you know, that we could absorb this in our contingency funding for this year, but, uh, the mayor had an idea of, uh, But the mayor had an idea of trying to get some corporate sponsors for it, you know, just some help to pay for it. The next step would be to to have Doug go ahead and and get the specifications out so we can get bids on it. So that we can get a contractor and and order order this order the structure and get it put up before June. I asked Doug to get me a scope and fee on that. I don't have that yet, but I expect it to be under $10,000 for him to do that. So I just offer it, you know, if if you want to proceed with this, we can, we can do that. Have Doug have Doug authorize me up to $10,000 for Doug's work on the plans and specs. And then we'll bring back, we'll bring back the bids that we get at a later meeting. But you know, if we want to, if we want to be comfortable in getting this in before our June performances, then we probably need to make a decision. At least, you know, by the very latest at the next meeting, if we want to do it.
So just some questions on the fabric on steel structures. The ones we they're permanent, they're up there all the time.
No.
They come up and down. I mean, I guess I'm concerned again, just with weather and wind and how how that.
How long they last?
And how long are they going to last? I mean, when I look at it, and depending on which one we go, of course, you could be spending $30,000 and then adding on to it. If we ever want something for lighting and, you know, and that whole, you know, speakers and all that. Or you could be up to 50 or 60,000 and doing the same thing. Whereas when you're looking at like at a wooden structure, it just seems so much more permanent. It it seems like if you have that kind of structure, lights and anything are going to be able to easily be mounted on that without adding extra expense later on. I know it's more expensive upfront, but it seems like I see less added expense that would come at a later time with it. And not that I'm totally against the other ones, but it just seems, I don't know, I just the permanent solidness of it just seems. Like I suppose it'd be covered by insurance. So if it blows away someday or something happens to it, but I'm I. My big concern, I guess, after reading that really is, is that, you know, you do one thing for now, but then we want to add on to it later. And then we spend more money in the end. And are we going to end up spending 100,000 in the end anyway? By having something strong enough to hold lights, if you so choose, and speaker mounts and stuff like that on it.
I think those are all good points.
I mean, that's just.
I think the only answer I have is the fabric, it does come down in the winter. And Jay says that these these ones out back, they're the original ones and they're still in pretty good shape. So that's been.
How many years have they been up?
14, 13 years.
I was gonna say they've been replaced once because the original ones were different colors.
Sure.
There used to be.
I thought Jay was saying that these have been.
There used to be a yellow one and.
10 years or so.
Red one, I think.
I think the manufacturer will tell you 10 years if you take them down. But it's a good, that's a good.
The one I found that we that I use, of course, it's only 20 by 30. And it's called sailcloth and it they said it would last eight years. Well, I'm going on now and, you know, it's getting a little bit to the point where I'm thinking I'm going to have to replace it. And it's been up four years and I take it down every every fall and put it up every spring. And of course, that way there's no snow load or anything getting on it. But I'm kind of with Lori that I would like to see more something permanent and stuff that wouldn't deteriorate over time. And I know that four months ago, I talked to three businesses here in town, which would be, I was going to pass it on to the mayor. That they were wanting to donate on that structure down there. And they would want something more permanent than a sailcloth or the fabric construction. So I think we should look further into it and kind of steer away from a fabric or temporary and structure, temporary shelter.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Well, certainly on the fabric structures, you, you know, there's lots of different kinds that can be made to last a long time. You know, the Denver Airport's roof is a fabric roof. So you can get there, but it's just what we buy to for for the serviceability and and life situation. It's the thing I was wondering when I was reading this is the references made to shade structure. And when the size was shown to be the size of the stage, I think the example of that wood structure there at the bottom is example. The shade never is under where the structure is, right? There's no shade on that concrete under that structure. And when you think about when this is going to be used, what are we really trying to accomplish? Are we trying to accomplish weatherproofing of the stage? So for example, keeping rain off so that it's an all weather sort of stage. Then a roof directly over it solves that problem. If we're trying to create a shade over it, then somebody needs to think about. The times of day that this is going to occur and therefore, how are you actually going to achieve shade on the stage? And I don't know if Doug has has done the solar or whatever to to think about that. But I think if we if we're thinking that we're just going to put it over the stage and get shade in the evening, we're probably going to be disappointed. So.
Yeah, no.
The tent in your stadium parking lot never puts shade on your parking spot. It's always the spot next to you. So I would just say, let's give that some thought as to what we're whether we're trying to weatherproof the stage or or rain, you know, cover rain. Or whether we're trying to create shade.
A couple of things on the rain, just discussions that I've had. The shade, you know, the temporary structure would provide some degree of weatherproofing. A lot of that material isn't completely watertight, but you know, it'll give maybe the band some time to get their equipment up and gone. With the assumption that if it's pouring down rain, you're not going to be having a concert anyway. So it's not a complete, not completely a weatherproof thing. And the shade, you're right. It's not, I I think.
Yeah, unless we put some walls on it. I mean, that's.
Yeah, but.
But I don't think we want to create that environment.
Right, right.
I would just caution the part about shade.
A little bit more about framing the performance space, you know, from a visual standpoint than, you know, that had something to do with the desire to make it happen.
That's probably what it's about more, you know.
Yeah.
The drummer or the the bass player that's on the right side of the picture back in the back, he's going to have some nice shade. The lead singer out front, he's in the sunshine or she.
And a reversed thing, you know, when you're looking at that, that's great. But when it's facing the west and the sun is always going to be there, you almost need it like turned around a different direction.
Well, and the worst part of this, you know, when we're having our the the sun is kind of coming in more like this angle. I don't know if you can see where I'm running cursor. So Doug and I talked about some tree plantings up here along the sidewalk and so. This there's nothing you're going to be able to do here that gets shade during these performances.
Did land, one of our bands actually turned their.
Well, yeah.
Sound.
The audience.
Into the trees to where the audience was.
Because of where the people were sitting in the shade.
Exactly. Yeah, the people were all in the under the big cottonwood trees.
Yeah. And that was his thought, plant some trees up.
And all the years that Sarah had it down there, you know, with that concerts that she put on, that stage was not turned in that configuration. It was more towards, you know, a little more to the.
More toward out.
Yeah, this way. So that and a lot of folks always said over there, I am more for the permanent style because of that. But and and a lot of the speakers did not ever hang on the stage racks. They they just had platform tables that they stuck those on.
Those are the big events.
Yeah. But 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 even though even though those tables aren't very expensive to put on either side of the stage to hold those figures.
The more I talk with Doug about about the rack, the less I thought we really needed it. Because those, you know, the bands, the the sounding light people, they'll bring, they'll put them on their own stands.
Yeah. Well, and if those things aren't that important, I'm not against the fabric one. If the fabric one, if there's options that could fit what Kevin just said and kind of match blocking. Coming down more on the sides or something that would actually block the sun. So, you know, when you look at these, you know, maybe there's options. These are obviously just real centered and on the top, but the one that's over top of the pool, you know, maybe it's angled a different direction. So that it would block the sun. So I think that's something would be much easier to do with the fabric ones. If there's a way, but I think that's just something to ask Doug about if they, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
We always had a shade drop that that rolled down the back and it covered behind, it actually provided a backdrop. So as well, and you could see the band a little better when the lights were were on.
Yeah, at the back.
Yeah. And that that did help with the shade as it went across, you know, through the river.
Yeah, but we wouldn't want a shade drop in the front.
No, it was only in the back.
But if it was angled the direction.
If it, yeah.
If it was angled a different direction where the sun, so that the front, the sides would be facing more where the sun is coming in. It's just really depends on.
That's a tough problem.
I mean, it's just just hard, though, with the way we have it laid out now.
My thought was, sorry, Lori.
No, go ahead. No, you're fine.
Before we start any kind of fundraising campaign, we got to be able to tell people what it is we want to build. So.
Yeah.
That's that's where we are. And so if we and if we don't get it done this year, that's fine, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it's okay. But we want to make sure we invest in what we want to have out there. And so.
Well, I wish I had time to just go travel some parks and see what's all out there, see what works. But maybe if you take some of these comments back to Doug, he might have some ideas to, you know, alleviate, you know, what we're trying to say. Because I mean, I do think that the shade seems to be the most important thing and the looks of it and everything. But as far as rain and stuff, you know, that's. We're not, like you said, we're not doing anything in downpour because you're not going to have anybody sitting out there watching. So, you know, the shade is a big issue.
Why don't I, why don't I have Doug provide me that scope, let him know what the feedback is? We might be wanting, you know, a more permanent structures and there's some, there's some, there's some design back and forth effort to be done. Here in the next month or so, and then have him get me a scope and fee for his services to do that.
Because I think if it meets what we're talking about the shade, about it permanent fabric, really, if it meets the needs and deals with the shade. But does that is that where you need the approval to go ahead and start spending some money with Doug to get this?
Well, I I would suggest if everybody just wanted to do the shade thing, then yeah, let's authorize me to spend the money with Doug and get going. I think now it doesn't seem like we're there. So let me bring back, I'll let Doug know what we're wanting to do now as far as planning and and options go. And let me bring back a scope and fee for from him that you guys can approve, the actual scope and fee with Doug. And then we'll just start the process there.
As a design development process.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just engage him. And I don't need that authorization tonight. I'll bring it back.
I think that's.
I just don't think we want inflatable ones.
It might be fun on the river.
We might be in the river with those.
A style like that, one on the left, they use it out in Western, Western Kansas.
The Flint Hill thing?
They, yeah, they did have it at the Symphony on the Plains, didn't they? I thought it'd be fun to rent one just to just to watch Jay put it up.
I showed that to Jay and he just shook his, he didn't have to say a word. I knew.
Well, the acoustics that would come out of there would be good.
That's that's the benefit of those. Yeah. They're truly Hollywood Bowl band shells.
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Item five, executive session. Anything to talk about tonight?
Not seen.
Advisory reports, city administrator.
Just quickly, we had a an open house on the Parks, I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec referendum Monday evening. Didn't have our normal Parks Board meeting, but we had the open house. We had four or five resident, we outnumbered the folks that showed up, all the members of the park board showed up. And Rick and Rob were there as well, myself and Jay and Justin Whitney. We outnumbered them. But it was a good dialogue back and forth. You know, I think people, the folks that were there were pretty supportive of the idea and had some good questions. We'll have another open house before, oh man, before the next council meeting. Is that right?
That's what, yeah.
Yeah.
The 20th.
On the 20th.
So it'll be from what, six to seven then?
I believe it's 5:30 to 6:30. So that we had some time in between. Yeah, yeah. So that's then Lori, you actually asked the question of me, you know, as as council members, and we we went over this with with the park board as well. What are your limitations about, you know, campaigning for or against this initiative or just getting information and facts out? I did give you some, what I thought, Patrick, jump in if I'm off base. But what we kind of told the park board was that, you know, obviously the city cannot campaign for or against this. You know, we can't submit information that says you really should vote yes on your mail in ballot. We can't do that. We can give the information what like as we should, which is what we're doing. But of course, staff can't go out and represent that, hey, you know, the council really wants you to do this. We can't, we can't do that. So similarly, you as a council member shouldn't go out and say that, hey, you know, the DeSoto Park Board and DeSoto Council is really behind this. You should, you should vote. But you as an individual, you can, you can campaign all you want. You can say, you know, me as Danny Lane, I'm really against this and you should, you should not vote for it. But don't represent your views as those of the whole council and be very careful. I know none of you ever come in here and make copies or really do any business here, but don't use city property or city assets to distribute that information. So in a nutshell, that's it. And if you have any questions, obviously, ask ask Patrick. Because that's the extent of my knowledge, all the nuances there. So far, you know, response on social media has been relatively positive. You know, we've heard some negative, but for the most part, it's positive. People are excited and interested and have questions, you know, relating to projects that are, you know, good questions and good dialogue online. You know, you don't expect that all the time, do you? So that was it. Wanted to remind you of that.
When will we actually see the language on the county's election site?
Oh, we got an email about that today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
She just emailed this evening, said it'll be on there tomorrow.
All right. Good. That was my concern. I was like, shoot, I wish we.
Really do it?
We're going out and telling people this is coming up and it's not, you know, not showing up on the election site.
Well, did but did we submit the language that's actually used? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you passed a resolution.
Back in December. Yeah. But they had these other mail in ballots up there, but ours wasn't mentioned yet. So there was a couple of things that went earlier. So I was just curious about that. All right.
Yep.
So you're done, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Brad?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reiterate, I mean, I wasn't here for January meetings, but I want to thank the council and Mike for allowing me to do the AAU certified public manager course. Finish that up and like send me that graduation certificate. So it's a lot of work and effort. And I really appreciate the council supporting myself.
Okay. Lana?
A couple of things. I'll let you know, my duties as IMC president are going to pick up pretty heavily. I've already dropped the bomb on Mike and Patrick that March and April are going to be pretty heavy travel schedules. So I'm loading up my DeSoto pens and will be hitting the road in February, the February 20th meeting. I will be in Rancho Cucamonga at headquarters for a board meeting. So Patrick will be covering for me. But I will be, I will be.
Okay.
And like Brad, thank you once again to all of you for this wonderful opportunity. DeSoto pens are from worldwide.
We order them in big batches, I'm good.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lana. Okay, council comments. Kevin, would you like to start tonight?
I have nothing.
Okay, that's a good start. Lori? No, not not to Lori, say whatever you want to say.
I think most of my items have already been covered tonight. So I just would make one brief comment about, you know, hopefully. Things get kind of worked out with RG fiber and all the problems and issues and everything we've gone. It's been, I think, kind of a experience for everybody on this and not that anybody did anything right or wrong. It just is the way it is and we got to kind of move forward with it and try to do our part, what we can to help the people that have been kind of put under by this a little bit. So, but you know, it'll get there. So I just hope everybody's patient with us while we get that, get things worked out. But I think that's all I had tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Rob?
One thing that actually came up tonight, just in thinking, talking about sewers, is there any update on or any movement on sunflower redevelopment? And the sewer access lines that we've been talking about, or is that pretty much still stalled?
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, I I don't have really anything I can really say publicly. But yeah, there's been recent discussions with ownership with SRL. They've expressed a renewed desire to move forward on many fronts associated with our involvement with them in the utility corridor. It's not just the sewer line we've. We've actually asked a couple of years ago, hey, could we negotiate for the sale of the whole utility corridor? So, actually, you know, as recently as today or yesterday, we've had some dialogue with them. And if you want more, I can, I can brief you later.
That, that was the main thing, is it kind of dead in the water stall, or is it actually?
Certainly hot and cold. Everything with SRL is hot and cold, but yeah, seems to be hot now, so, yeah.
Anything else tonight, Rob?
Nope.
Okay. Kevin, Ritter?
I do not have anything.
Danny? My mind just went blank, so I guess I really didn't have anything too important, too. It'll wait till next time, whatever it was.
Sold. I'll make a motion, adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, we adjourn.